...of America and a community building for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The prayer today is praying for the flood victims in Texas. God is our refuge and strength, a very present help in trouble. May God's comfort, strength, and hope surround every person affected. Let's lift them up with our prayers today. Amen.
Good morning, Commissioners. On July 2nd, 2025, I concurred with the Chester Township trustees in not requesting a hearing on the liquor license being requested by Grupo Ramvila LLC DBA El Mexicano located at 8053 Mayfield Road and Patio in Chesterland, Ohio. Also, on July 2nd, I again concurred with the Chester Township trustees in not requesting a hearing on the liquor license being requested by Spence Petroleum DBA Sunmark located at 8247 Mayfield Road in Chesterland. On July 7th, I executed the following actions for the Department on Aging. There are five of them. I accepted the resignation of Melinda Whitaker, Part-Time Adult Day Service Assistant, to be effective June 30th, 2025. Number two, I granted the Department on Aging permission to advertise for the position of Part-Time Adult Day Service Assistant, number 1041-1. This position will remain posted until it is filled. Number three, I approved the hiring of Elizabeth Sanders to the position of Full-Time Transportation Driver, number 1020, to be effective July 28th, 2025, at the rate of $17.35 per hour with a one-year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon the successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions. Number four, I accepted the retirement resignation of Deborah Markovic, Information and Referral Assistant, to be effective August 31st, 2025. And finally, I granted permission to advertise for the position of Full-Time Information and Referral Assistant, number 1017. This position will remain posted until filled. Also, on July 7th, I accepted for the Maintenance Department the resignation of Gary Merker, Maintenance Worker, number 1904, to be effective July 11th, 2025. And that is all.
Thank you. Item number two, the Commissioners Office is requesting the Board approve and execute minutes for the meeting of May 29th, 2025.
I move to approve.
Say it.
Commissioner Spittler.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Commissioner Borack.
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adrian Morton from the Commissioners' Office. So today's financials include a transfer from the General Fund to Public Assistance for our July through September 2025 mandated share. Among the encumbrances is a purchase order from the Commissioners to Lake Tran for a $14,000 grant payment that had erroneously been sent to Jogi County and was deposited into the General Fund. Travel requests from the public defender to attend the Dayton Criminal Defense College Trial School. Among the vouchers are $104,105 from the Commissioners' Office to Ravenwood Mental Health Center for third-quarter youth center operations. $49,148.2 from the Sheriff's Office to Montrose Ford for a new F-150 pickup truck. $85,767.30 from the Sheriff's Office to Preston Chevrolet for two new Chevy Traverse SUV Social Security Investigation Vehicles. The Tahoe's that they will be replacing will be outfitted and moved up as patrol vehicles. And $48,970.14 from Water Resources to Junction Auto Sales Incorporated for a 2025 GMC Sierra 1500 double-cap pickup truck. The truck that this is replacing is a 2015 GMC Sierra 2500 with 154,000 miles, which will go to auction.
Trial School makes more sense than Trail School.
Did I say Trail?
No, you did say Trial.
Oh, but it's-
It's written as-
It is Trial School.
And I was like, why are they going to-
I'm sorry. That's my fault.
So that's-
Of course, it's not misspelled, it's just the wrong word.
That's right. Yeah, no, it's a, just an amusing typo.
Sorry.
No, don't be sorry, I enjoy the humor. I'll make a motion to approve the financials.
Say it.
Commissioner Spittler.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Yes.
And then the next item on the agenda, following our presentation of the tax budget last week, would be the Commissioners' Office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution 25-141, adopting the 2026 annual tax budget in accordance with Ohio Revise Code Sections 5705.28 and 5705.29.
So Adrian, the only question I had about this was related to if we want to suppress one of the levies due to the property valuations. And I know that there's some uncertainty regarding legislation and, you know, elimination of property taxes altogether. So I didn't know what our timeline would be on doing something like that if we wanted to.
I did go to the Budget Commission meeting last Monday.
Yeah.
A week ago yesterday. And the Budget Commission did seem to have a wait-and-see kind of attitude, looking at the budget bill that was going through and what the governor would veto. So now that that's all done-
Right.
We can, I think, begin the analysis of that.
Okay.
And I know when we initially did this, it was in the October timeframe, when the Budget Commission had us suppress those two JFS levies initially. Now, they suppressed by $1 million one of the JFS levies last year in their final meeting before, you know, adopting all of the tax budgets. So I would imagine sometime between August and October, we would need to make decisions on that.
Okay, got it. So we don't need to make that decision before we go before the Budget Commission, which I believe is in August, right?
No, yes, like the middle of August. That would be an excellent time to discuss potential reductions.
Okay, like prior to that meeting, you're thinking, or at-
At the meeting.
At the meeting, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we can probably evaluate what's going on as far as the property taxes and-
Correct.
If this is going to be on the ballot and so forth.
And I know the suggestion was made last year, too, of the possibility of foregoing the county's share of the local government tax-
Okay.
And having that distributed to the townships instead of the county. But they also said to hold off on that and see what ends up coming through with things, so.
Okay.
Well, we'll evaluate that and then make decisions. I think, I think what they said basically was that the 1 for 26 might be set already. I don't know if they do it in multiple-year increments or not, but we can still be moving towards that direction if we want to.
Okay. And then when would we make the decision regarding employee salary increases for next year?
Really, you can, you can make that decision at any time that you want to. There's no specific timeframe for that.
Okay.
It's probably a good time to begin discussions with the departments and see what their needs are and what are, what their budget constraints are. Because a lot of the departments under your hiring authority have funds outside the General Fund.
Right, right.
So, yeah, this would be a good time probably to start those conversations.
Yeah, I mean, because I don't want us to be in a situation where it's January and we haven't made any decisions and-
Right.
The departments are kind of scrambling, so those are my only two concerns, but otherwise I'm fine with the tax budget.
Yeah, any, any time between now and the end of the year.
Okay.
So for that.
And I think it's about the sort of raises, and I think what we did three years ago, we all agreed that three-year program for raises, I'm comfortable leaning towards that in my conversation, but we do talk about it.
Sounds good.
All right, so I make a motion to approve item number four.
Say it.
Commissioner Spittler.
Aye.
Commissioner Borack.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Frank Kenton, G, ADP Board. Agenda item number five is requesting approval for ADP to enter into a services agreement with Mottville Township. So that's all we're here asking. They're looking for some minimal services and we're looking to be able to assess them.
So this is just for destroying those old laptops, that's all they need?
It's pretty much just shredding services, yes.
Okay.
They don't have any way of getting rid of them, and it's very easy for us, so.
Okay. I make a motion to approve item number five.
Say it.
Commissioner Spittler.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item number six is entering into a services agreement with Newberry Township. This would be a much more thorough agreement. They're, they have a relatively new fiscal officer, she'll have been there a couple of years, and I believe she had seen sort of what happened to Burton Township and did not want that replicated there, and has essentially asked for as much security as possible. We've been talking with the trustees, and those guys get it too, big time. They're looking for whatever they can possibly do to secure the township funds and provide a higher level of technology.
So at this point, how many townships are under ADP, Frank?
Heading in, we have, I believe, six townships and two municipalities, and then two or three boards. So this would put us at somewhere around eight or nine townships.
Okay, great. I'll make a motion to approve item number six.
Thank you.
Say it.
Commissioner Spittler.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Yes.
So then Agenda item number seven is, is sort of requesting the Commissioners to consider formally, basically voting to place themselves in a queue. We have been demoing now a software product called Diligent Community. It used to be Board Docs, and that was changed to Diligent Community. It's something that Keston School District uses, it's something a number of public entities use. And this was brought up by the League of Women Voters last year, and Commissioner Braking brought that to my attention very early on, probably December last year, we started looking into it. And ultimately, it's a product that streamlines the public's interaction with boards like this. Commissioner DeVorecky would be familiar from the perspective of the Board of Revision hearings that you've participated in the past couple of years, I think Commissioner Braking or the representative this year. But that Otterwalder turned into a very digitized public apparatus. Was that two years ago now?
Yeah, at least, at least two years.
So we did that with sort of an in-house combination of Microsoft SharePoint products and then also ISSG products, which is our canvas system, and sort of marry the two. This product is that much more robust then. So basically, it would allow the clerk to create agendas right in this platform, and it's all web-based, it's hosted, and those would get pushed out to the public from there, there'd be no more mass emailing or anything of that nature. The public would have the ability to basically go to this website, which would be linked through your website, and then they could see any of the livestream videos, any historic videos, any agendas, as long as they were loaded up there, any meeting minutes, anything else the Board wants to know, wants them to know, or how to communicate with the public would all be out there. Basically be a one-stop portal for everything with that. So as of right now, ADP is, is in the process of purchasing the software. We're looking at allocating four licenses right off the bat. We have two licenses remaining. We're offering one to the Board of County Commissioners first since Commissioner Braking was the one who brought this to my attention. And then with the other one, we've got some other options. The point is, because ADP is purchasing the engine, it would not be any cost to the Commissioners, and we would handle the onboarding and the migration and work with your team on that. So really, we're just looking for, if you have any questions on the product, any timeframes or anything, and then if you're interested in actually sort of voting to officially get in that queue as something that we could consider down the road.
Well, I'm very comfortable with the software program, you know, with ADP or BOR, so I personally am okay with this.
And I understand you've been using something similar for years now-
Mm-hmm.
-in terms of agendas, and you understood what it was like before that, when we sat there at BOR and had eight inches of paper sitting in front of us that you had to review. Having it digitized was nice, especially with the photos and whatnot.
Yeah, I'm very excited to, to see this implemented, and I think it will be a better experience for our residents, so I'll make a motion to approve item number seven.
Say it.
Commissioner Spittler.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Yes.
All right, thank you. We will coordinate then with your staff on that one. I will tell you, it's not going to happen overnight, it's going to be a big migration. We will have to do a lot of work on it to actually build that background, and we'll just be in coordination from there. Thank you so much.
Good morning.
Good morning. Nicole Walker, Chief Probation Officer of the Geogga County Commonplace Court. We are asking that the Board approve our Community Corrections Grant as well as our TCAP grant in the amount of $530,000, I'm sorry, $530,000 in dollars, from July 1st through June 30th, 2027, with no local match.
I move to approve.
Say it.
Commissioner Spittler.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Shane Jar with the Engineers' Office. I have two items on the agenda today. Item number nine, the County Engineers' Office requesting the Board approve and execute unit-priced contract with Rhineyak Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Fairmount Road, County Highway 12, Sections B through G, in Newberry Russell, Chester Township, in the amount of $1,220,100.
I move to approve.
Say it.
Commissioner Spittler.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Yes.
And item number 10, Engineers' Office requesting Board approve and execute unit-priced contract with Rhineyak Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Fairmount Road, County Highway 16, Section C, through the, in Russell, in Newberry Township, in the amount of $690,223.
I move to approve.
Say it.
Commissioner Spittler.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Jessica Holt, Director of Job and County Department on Aging. I'm helping Christie clear out her drawer here today. I'm requesting the Board approve the release of bid performance bonds for the following projects. Three home care services assistance with daily living programs from 2019, '21, and '22, and for the elderly nutrition program with catered meals in 2022.
I move to approve item number 11.
Commissioner Spittler.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. Charles T. Catch, Maintenance Department. I have three items on the agenda this morning. The first one, item number 12, is the Maintenance Department is requesting the Board award the bid to GovTrust Partners LLC with the Geogga County Safety Center Visitation Room Alteration Project in the amount of $130,098, as they represented the lowest investment bid.
Okay, so I agree that they are the lowest bid, but I am not quite convinced that they are the best bid. It seems like they were only formed in February. I went to their website, it's like a coming-soon type website. I mean, I think the name GovTrust is doing a lot of heavy listing. Seems like they don't have any current contracts based on their qualification sheet. The address is the guy's, is a residential address, it seems like he's running it out of his own. So do you have any thoughts on, on any of that?
Yes, we had some of the same concerns within the Maintenance Department, we had some conversations around it. I did reach out to Moshe, who is the owner of GovTrust, and he provided some additional information for us on the, he has, he has not completed a project under the new company name, they just formed a company in February, to focus on government jobs. They had been doing residential jobs previously, they are now focused on government, or at least this, this, this arm or this-
Yeah.
-company is actually focused on the government jobs. He did provide me details around the projects that he had led and completed previously under the companies he's, he had previously worked for. I did contact this morning two of those three. One was the owner of Carmel Property Management, and the other one is the managing partner of, I believe it's 14650 Detroit Avenue LLC. One was a 64-unit conversion project for residential in Lakewood, Ohio, and the other one was a 17-unit conversion. Both owners spoke very highly of him. They, they used words such as "he was responsible," "responsive," "he had pride in his work," "he was very smart," "very proactive," "worked everything from beginning to end," "was always there early," "left late." Really felt very strongly that, both of them said that they tried to encourage him to stay, but he wanted to start his own company.
Okay.
Both would take him back in a heartbeat. And I also asked if they would recommend them to the Board to do this specific project. I did describe the project, the scope of the project. It was very much in line with a lot of the work that he has done previously for them, and they would both strongly recommend him for the project.
So even though these, his prior projects seems like they're more residential in nature because of what this project is involving-
Mm-hmm.
You believe it's, it's within his scope of expertise, of prior jobs, et cetera?
Yes, most of the work that we're doing at the, at the Safety Center Visitation Room Alteration is, is really more residential-like.
Yeah.
It's the renovation of a room, it's putting up a block wall, it's doing finishing and painting, a little bit of electrical, some duct work, there's no major systems being installed from an HBAC perspective or so forth.
Right, right.
So it does lend itself more to a residential feel, even, even though it's a commercial building and has all that attached to it as well.
Okay.
Has he ever worked in prevailing wage jobs?
He has filed all the documentation with it. I didn't ask him that specific question of, of, you know, if he has had previous projects that, that had up, that he does have the packet for all of the prevailing wage for us, and he went through them, and it seems like he's on board with that.
So you're comfortable with this company, based, based on what's been provided and-
I feel that the size of the project is small enough that-
Yeah.
-if we're going to give a new company an opportunity-
Yeah.
-this might be a good one.
Yeah.
It, it, there's not a lot that can get out of their control, but there's, as you know, there's no guarantee-
I understand.
So.
I understand. I mean, there is, there is a significant delta between them and the next bid-
Yes.
And as, you know, we talked about prior, there is an issue with the next highest bid as well.
Right.
So it's not like there's a clean solution if we went with them either way.
Correct.
Hey, did he send you over a copy of his bonding?
Yes.
Okay.
We have all the, all the proper paperwork that supported the bid.
So if he gets halfway done with the job and walks away-
We have-
-he takes into the bond-
Yeah, we have a certified check-
That's a good question.
Mm-hmm, yes.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve item number 12.
Say it.
Commissioner Spittler.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Yes.
All right, the next item on the agenda is item number 13. The Maintenance Department is requesting the Board approve and execute change order number one, increasing agreement for professional design services with Technical Assurance Incorporated for additional engineering services related to the roof replacement and masonry restoration for the Jogi County Annex Building located at 219215 Main Street, Chardonnay Highway, in the amount of $17,000 for a total not to exceed the amount of $34,500.
I move to approve.
Say it.
Commissioner Spittler.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Yes.
All right, the next item on the agenda is item number 13. The Maintenance Department is requesting the Board approve and execute change order number one, increasing agreement for professional design services with Technical Assurance Incorporated for additional engineering services related to the roof replacement and masonry restoration for the Jogi County Annex Building located at 219215 Main Street, Chardonnay Highway, in the amount of $17,000 for a total not to exceed the amount of $34,500.
I move to approve.
Say it.
Commissioner Spittler.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking. Aye.
Yes.
Okay, and the third item on it is item number 14. The Maintenance Department is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise for bids for the County Maintenance Barn Roof Replacement Project to be held on Wednesday, August 6th, 2025, at 2:00 PM. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on July 11th, July 18th, and on the county website.
So the only question I have about this, so it's a slate roof and it's being replaced with synthetic slate, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
And then I, I'm just wondering if you should also consider a metal roof for that?
We did actually have that as an option, and we did consider it. It was, the actual slate roof or synthetic slate was a 50-year, the metal roof was only 30 years-
Oh, really?
And it was almost a similar price.
Oh, okay. I, I thought metal was longer-lasting.
Yeah.
All right, very good. So I'll make a motion to approve item number 14.
Say it.
Commissioner Spittler.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Nick Goris, Water Resources. Item 15 on the agenda is requesting the Board approve and authorize, Commissioner Spittler and authorized representative to execute the OWDA fund payment request number three for the McFarland Creek wastewater treatment plant improvement project for tech services pleaded by HDR Engineering in the amount of $49,317.24.
I move to approve.
Say it.
Commissioner Spittler.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Yes.
Item 16 on the agenda is requesting the Board approve and execute a certification request to the county auditor, request to Board of Commissioners quarterly use of county credit cards for an increase in our quarterly annual amounts for the Home Depot Commercial account. Since the designers that we have, it's, Home Depot is pretty close to our McFarland plant, so between our operations in McFarland, we've come up on the quarterly allowance, so just increase it by $750 a quarter.
I move to approve.
Say it.
Commissioner Spittler.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking. Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll take number 17. The Commissioners' Office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution 25-144 honoring Geogga County Job and Family Services on being named a Northeast Ohio Top Workplace for 2025.
Amy, can you give us some background on the, on the award? Craig, if you want to give the background.
It's kind of weird. So we had a newer employee who worked at a previous company, who is now in our HR division, that had taken, their company had taken part in this process of kind of looking under the hood and seeing what their staff think. And I didn't even know that this wasn't even an option, that this award could come out of it, and just to get feedback on how staff are feeling. And I said, sure, why not? Let's give it a try. And we, we did, and the result, the amount of information that we've gotten back is, from the survey, is tremendous. And it's something that you can do year over year to improve, so it's not just a device, you know, that you can, hey, you get this award, but it's also a way to, to kind of check the temperature of your organization and see where you're doing well and see where you can improve. And so there were wonderful things that came out, as, you know, staff feels that they're closely, the work that they're doing is closely aligned to their mission of the organization, but then also there are things that, hey, opportunities for growth, you know, that was an area that we want to work on. But at the end of the day, we still met the benchmark that's set by the organization EnerGage that has been doing this for 17, I think 16, 17 years in Northeast Ohio, that we, we met that benchmark, but again, I just want the Board to know that, you know, yes, it's great that we did this, but we still even want to use it further to improve year after year. But we were truly the only government organization out of all 188 companies or organizations that were met that, to, to achieve that benchmark. And again, it's my sta, it's not me, it's my staff, it's my division directors, my supervisors that closely work hand-in-hand with, with staff. But it's also on top of it, it's, the Commissioners have enabled me here over the years to give me the tools to support my staff. I know Commissioner Spittler, last year with raises, you know, recognizing that social workers need to get paid, that they go into homes in dangerous situations, and you as well, Commissioner DeWorack, and I know you are also very supportive, Commissioner Braking, on making sure that staff have the tools that they need to get the job done. It's not an easy job, a lot of what my staff do, they're meeting people when they're most broken and that they need to be lifted up, but they feel empowered to execute and do It's not an easy job. A lot of what my staff do, they're meeting people when they're most broken and that they need to be lifted up, but they feel empowered to execute and do the things that they do. I know the county, the feedback that I get from the people of the county that we serve are greatly appreciative. We've got a lot of businesses, including Preston, including Junction, that provide donations to us so we can fill the cracks where the programs don't fully work. So we've got a lot of investment, not, you know, in the community, but also from the people of the community into us. So I'm just very grateful that my staff feel the way that they do, and we're going to continue to even further address and improve that, so.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 17.
Second.
Commissioner Blair.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for you and your whole staff, because you're a shining star in Northeast Ohio, and it's really explains what this award, so congratulations.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Did you get to take a picture?
Oh, yeah. Let's do a photo op.
Let's take pictures.
Very good.
You can stay right over there. Go around. Just take, just take a look. Take the side arrow.
Thank you.
Oh, you can leave it out. Come around here. We can get together.
No problem, we're good.
Thank you so much.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number 18, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute a non-binding letter of intent with the Jugga County Public Library Board indicating the Commissioner's desire to purchase the library, desire to purchase the library and the Board's, yes.
The Board's administration building.
Yes, to purchase the Jugga County Public Library Administration Building.
And I have Chris. Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought Chris was here somewhere.
I also have one of my members here. Kate, is he able to come?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Just state your name.
Chris Carroll, Jugga County Public Library Director.
Kate Petron, Library Trustee.
So we're, you know, we're very, very happy with this collaboration. We think this is good for both the county and the library to move forward with our various projects.
Yeah, absolutely. I feel like we're taking a valuable public asset, and we're putting, we're shifting it from one taxpayer pocket to another, essentially, and keeping it in use for public. It brings us one step closer to vacating 470th Street, and I think it's going to make your operations more efficient with your new library buildings. So we'll be a win-win for both of us.
Yeah, and it also brings us closer to that combined efficiency with having a branch and admin together. So it really is good for everybody in the county. And it's been great working with you.
Great example of collaboration. The citizens win, the taxpayers win, and with us gaining this administration building for Chardon Senior Center, it'll be very close to the director here on the second floor. And then with the funds that you're receiving is really gonna, you capitalize on that to have administration and a new library in Chardon City. So it's a great day in Jugga County.
And I've recently toured the current Chardon Senior Center, and I think this is going to be a very nice welcome upgrade for our seniors. Jessica is nodding her head enthusiastically in the back, if you can't see on camera. But yeah, I think it's going to be a nice, modern space. You guys have maintained it very well. I think our seniors are going to be, are going to really enjoy the space.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll make a motion to approve item number 18.
Second.
Commissioner Blair. Commissioner Breckin.
Aye.
Commissioner Blair.
Yes.
Item 19, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the request for partial payment number 21 for Infinity Construction Company Incorporated for the Jugga County Courthouse Expansion, GMP Phase 1 and Phase 2, expenses in the amount of $557,166.86.
And NB5 approved this? Have they reviewed it? Does Linda?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to approve item number 19.
Second.
Commissioner Blair.
Aye.
Commissioner Breckin.
Aye.
Yes.
Item 20, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the service contract agreement with cash moving and storage to provide services related to the relocation of the Jugga County Board of Elections to the County Office Building, with the move to be completed within a six-month period in an amount not to exceed $39,040.
So Amy, talk to me about this, with the move not to be, or the move to be completed within a six-month period?
I think that gives us a window of time to be able to complete the move. If there's additional things that maybe weren't moved that need to be, it just gives us a window rather than a really narrow timeframe of a week, let's say.
But, but we're anticipating it not to take.
No, yes, we don't. Just gives us a buffer.
Yeah, so I was reading some of the documents, and they were like, well, we're gonna have to, you know, move some things, and then unpack, figure out what's gonna go, and then move some more. And I'm like, then it could take up to six months. And I thought, that sounds like an absolute nightmare. But we're not, we're not anticipating them to need that whole period.
No.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve item number 20.
Second.
Commissioner Blair.
Aye.
Commissioner Breckin.
Aye.
Yes. Okay. Item number 21. Committee got together on June 30. Linda Brerhaney, myself, Christine LaComia, and Prosecutor Jim Flights. And we just talked about, we have over, over $500,000 of the opioid settlement funds. Different mechanism of money versus the One Ohio Foundation. So, and that meeting, we all had a little homework to research. And we'd like to give a full presentation to the Board of Commissioners on July 22. We're investigating certain things that could help other agencies that might have a shortfall from the state of Ohio. And we'll see, we'll research law enforcement too, see if they need anything. But we'll give you a full report on July 22.
Okay. And I thought we were under $500,000. So has that fund increased?
It's, oh, we've gotten some recent deposits. And we put it back over $500,000.
Okay, great. Thank you.
CIC.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Linda Brerhaney, Assistant County Administrator.
Gina Hofstadter, Director of Community and Economic Development.
Hello.
So the CIC, here we are, many years of subject matter here. So obviously, back in May, I communicated with Linda, and of course, as Amy wasn't here yet. This has been a process for us. When I arrived almost four years ago, the CIC was basically went and fell into the tank, and we had lost our 501(c)(3) status, and it had not been managed. There were very few meetings that had taken place. The history of this goes back into the 60s, I believe, and once utilized for a lot of bonds, corporate bonds, that we normally, at this point, aren't seeing a whole lot of interest in that. The Community Improvement Corporation traditionally is a, it's a development tool that can be used. There are things like, Lake County has a land bank. They kind of work in that facet. I'm thinking, what, now, most two years? When Linda came in?
Been a while.
Been a minute. And the need was where we needed to kind of see what we were doing, which direction we were going to take the CIC. Not having a whole lot of experience with it, we came to find that, I did bring it back up. We created a small board, kind of changed its identity. That board never met. We had to meet, and we have our attorney that represents the CIC, meet with prosecutors, and go through, at this point, thousands of dollars' worth of legal bills that added up to come to today, and we still don't have a CIC at this point. So we are up now for an audit for the 23, 24 books. We are required by the state of Ohio to produce a Hinkle report, and then the state comes and they do an audit. And, you know, it's pretty much what it is. So, you know, why, why do we want to keep the CIC as a tool? Why do we not? You know, I'm here to answer what questions you have, kind of find out what you know about it, and see if we'd move forward in possibly dissolving it. Right now, we do have some obligations financially that still need to be met. We will be required to file a Hinkle report as a final, as well as pay some past obligations of debt that we've incurred for the CIC. So Linda, can you?
The Community Improvement Corporation functioned in two specific areas, and you will correct me if I'm wrong.
Sure.
One of them, it seemed like it was almost like a social club. People had to pay to be a part of it, and they spent a lot of administrative effort and time and money to put on sort of parties, basically. Yes, that was, that was the one area. The other area where it was used most recently by the Board was to manage some property sales. And that was to, I don't want to say get around the requirements of the law in terms of how a government can sell a property, but if you're in a place where you know who specifically you want to sell a property to, it was possible and legal for you to convey that property to the Community Improvement Corporation, and they could essentially carry out more of a private sale rather than the sealed bid process that's in the law. That was done when you sold the JFS building to the hospital, and it was done when you sold the former Chardon Senior Center to Ravenwood. We're in a place now where, while you are looking at the possibility of selling a property, there's no reason why you can't utilize the normal process under the law of using the sealed bid process if you choose to. We don't see, unless you have some other ideas that no one has told us about, we don't see a real function for the CIC other than that going forward. We tried really hard to get it set back up. We got the 501(c)(3) back. We got the incorporation, you know, the corporation done. We got the Hinkle report done. We got the audit done. We went to this attorney back and forth and back and forth, and we could never get him to finish the Code of Regulations to get it to the finish line. And so I finally gave up. I pinged him regularly for a year, and I just could not get the documents from him. So if you want to keep the CIC going, obviously, we can do that. But we're going to have to find an attorney that will work with us to get us to the finish line. It is perfectly legal to dissolve the CIC and just not have one anymore. That's going to be, and that's why we're here. We need direction from you. What do you want us to do about the Community Improvement Corporation? Do we keep it, or do we dissolve it?
Is there an argument that we could get more for a property with the CIC, with not using the sealed bid process?
I have no idea what the answer, I mean, you have a real estate professional up there, and he might be better able to answer that than me. To me, the sealed bid process makes people sharpen their pencils because you've got to bring your best.
Your best with final, essentially.
But that's just my opinion, and I'm not a real estate professional.
It kind of clashes with the arm of the sale, you know, a clean sale.
For sure.
Was it, was it advertised property? Was it, you know, closed?
It's transparency.
I'm leaning towards lawful activity.
Well, it's not like what you did was unlawful at all.
No, it's absolutely within the realm of.
It was completely lawful. That was the choice that was made because you knew who you wanted to sell it to.
Arm's length transaction, that's the term.
That's what you're after. I think this will sum it up, if you'd allow me to just to read this, Commissioner Breckin. A county can use a community improvement corporation to sell county-owned properties as an agent, bypassing standard public sale requirements and potentially selling at below-market value. This is done to facilitate economic development, revitalize areas, or address specific community needs. The CIC can acquire, improve, and sell properties for economic development purposes.
Yeah, so I mean, it's kind of the opposite way, it seems. You know, my question is, could we get more money through the CIC? But it sounds like, no, you can get less money through the CIC.
Correct, correct. The management of it, exactly.
Right, and there's a lot of expenses and hassle that seems involved in that.
Sure. I mean, it is absolutely a tool from a development perspective. You know, agreements, and it's pretty convoluted. I mean, we need a lot more time to get into the specifics, and I'm no expert by any means. But my understanding is, we did a little research in our office, 2019, again, as Linda mentioned, was the Ravenwood Mental Health, and then, of course, the UH Building. We utilized the CIC. That was the last transactions. Prior to that was 2012. That we actually utilized the CIC for the function of a land transfer.
When did you say the JFS building was?
Those were 2019.
2019?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It's been a minute.
It has been, absolutely.
I'm in favor of dissolving. It seems like that's a logical step.
Yeah. And again, many years of, a lot of events. I don't want to slight what it used to be before, but there's so much redundancy in our community and county doing those things in various partners. So we have files and files of, you know, invoices of paid parties and events and honoring businesses, which was great, but we're still doing those things to date.
Okay. So do you need a motion today, or are you?
That I'm uncertain about.
If you're prepared to act on it, I don't, how do you feel about that?
I can certainly come back and.
Do you need to take a formal action of some sort?
A motion.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm required to discuss at the state level right now, so they're putting this conversation today. And then I can certainly bring it back and write a request to officially dissolve it next week, if you'd like.
That's fine, yeah, that's on time with me.
So come back next week?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay.
Yes.
With a formal? Any other questions at all?
It's run its course.
It's run its course.
It was great since his day.
Certainly.
Things have changed, so.
Yeah, definitely. And I hope to be able to utilize, perhaps, you know, look at some other avenues of partnering with the land bank in Lake County, not reinventing the wheel. I believe that is absolutely acceptable based on code. So hopefully, those will be some options for us as well.
Yeah.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
Thank you. The next item under discussion has to do with some change requests that we, I need to get a sense from you whether or not to get an actual formal change order from Infinity. The first one, we've already talked about once before, and that has to do with the additional Creston equipment that was requested by the prosecutor. That would be a change order increase to the contract of approximately $22,000. The other one is a reduction to the contract. What happened was the, I think there was a switch that was specified earlier in the project that is now no longer available. And when we expected the new replacement one, it costs less, yay, by $11,000. So these two would be combined into a single change order request if it's something that you guys approved that would come from Infinity, and they would just be combined together, so it would be an increase of about $11,000. Is that something that I should have them go ahead and prepare then?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
It's good with me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this I have for you. I know you've seen it already, but I don't think you've seen this.
Okay.
This is what the plaque for the courthouse will actually look like. That's kind of cool, kind of cool. I just need to get from you, is this what you want? And is this what you want it to say? I know, Commissioner DeVorec, you asked me where on the building this plaque will be mounted.
Yeah, like in the lobby or?
The western main entrance. Has a sort of a portico on the outside of it. On one side is the niche where the thing from the law people is going to, the bar association is going to go.
But that's a time capsule, right?
Yeah.
Correct. And we're having just a really fun time trying to get final language for that, from them. This is rendering. This plaque will be in that portico also, on the north wall. So if you go into the portico to the main entry, on this wall's going to be the, that thing. And this wall would be your plaque. We just want to know if it says what you wanted to say. In particular, there was a question about the date that you wanted to put on it. I went downstairs and looked at the plaque in this building, and it's very similar to this downstairs in the lobby. And it has a dedication of a month and a year. And so we feel that substantial completion of the building will be in October of this year, although probably the moving will take six months. Who knows how long the move will take? A lot depends on how long it takes to get the furniture. But this includes the names of the three commissioners. It includes the architect, the owner's representative, and the construction company. Very similar, again, to what we have in this building.
So you have the architect, the construction manager, and the owner's rep on this building? That's on the plaque? It almost seems like an advertisement for those.[1769.61]
If you don't want them on there, you don't have to put them on there, that's entirely up to you.
I would take them off personally, but I don't, I mean, I don't want to be a jerk about it.
Let me, let me think about that.
Okay.
I'll get that.
Okay, if I could hear back, if that's appropriate, one-on-one possibly, by Thursday, so I can let them know at the next construction meeting, or I can bring it back to session next week, and you can give me an answer there, that is your call, so that, they just need to know, because it takes a while to get these things made.
Yep.
If you have anything you want to add further or subtract further, please let me know.
Okay.
So.
I think that Commissioner Lumsen should be added to that with all the work that he did, and that project was started before he left.
So next week, you guys can let me know if that's something you want to include or not, the last thing I have for you, and I only got this this morning, is a little bit of feedback about the questions that you had about the existing, the roof on the existing courthouse.
Oh, yeah.
We had an engineer that came on the thirteenth of June, who looked, we do not have the formal report yet, but we have a kind of a ten-thousand-foot conclusion, and this will help you understand what's on the last page of what I just gave you, that's a picture of a dip in the roof along the edge of the old courthouse, and in the final page, there's an explanation of why there's a dip there, and it basically says, the dipping of the roof line on the west side of the building is most likely due to loss of mortar at the brick veneer behind the cornice and the resulting settling of that brick, if the existing roof is re-roofed now and this work is not performed, some of that new roof and existing coping would need to be replaced in the future to allow for the removal of the deteriorated elements, so the sense that I'm getting so far from them is that this is probably a project for the future, when you guys decide to then address the existing courthouse, and it's probably going to be a pretty big deal, if, I mean, you guys have seen some of the pictures of the deterioration of the brick that lies underneath the edges of that roof, this is pretty concerning, and essentially, to throw a couple hundred thousand dollars at a roof where the, the supporting structure is deteriorated may not be the best option.
Yeah.
I know it, it was something where we felt that it might make sense to do the whole thing now, you got the roofer here, but obviously, that's your call, but it seems like the recommendation is most likely going to be to do that as a larger project addressing the entire infrastructure.
Okay.
So I just wanted to report back to you, I wanted you to know this has not been forgotten, we're also still working on the cabling issue that we brought you last week, the most recent quote I have is half of the number I gave you last week, but I still have some questions about it, and I don't think there's any giant hurry on that, so I will keep drilling down, because the amount of labor that we're asking for seemed excessive to me, but I'm not an IT person, I'm getting expertise on that, and then we'll bring you, that back to you, so that is all I have, if you have any questions for me?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twenty-two, public comment. Hearing done, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.